Oh, need your order for thoughts.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and that we are founded, justice for all.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to welcome this two new council. And I'm glad to have you on board. Be exciting about here listening to some new ideas. And we'll move on. So I like your motion to adopt the agenda that's presented. Amendment's agenda, excuse me.
I'll make a motion to adopt the amendment agenda.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, vote in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, public comment period, citizens may address the council on items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Out of respect for council and others in attendance, please limit your comment to three minutes, restate your name and address for the record. Do you have any public comments? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on down to department reports, nine one one.
Well, if you take a look at the, uh, just the stats, I had the December stats and then we had the yearly stats. It's pretty amazing how many calls that we receive. Uh, we did have a major outage with our radio system, our A-Link radio system. The Grimma got into the microwave system and then crashed the entire system. It took, uh, we were running on backup radio and then Motorola came over for two days and tried to, anyway, we got it. Bubble gum, bailing wire, and duct tape back into service. And we're hoping eventually, uh, you'll have the opportunity to help us replace it. Any questions from council?
Please council doesn't realize, uh, does nine one one system haven't really been upgraded for pretty much since it's been put in?
Two thousand four.
Do you have any idea what the cost is in the ambulance stuff?
Oh, I would say just a hair under four hundred thousand.
That's all?
Well, you're looking at ambulance, that's two hundred fifty thousand. I, when you're looking at public safety stuff, it has to be redundant. You have to have like two of each. So you, if one part fails, the other one picks it up. And for public safety, you know, can you put a price on it? The council can, but, you know.
Yeah.
But it has to be a re, uh, best, uh, system that has, uh, both A and B sides, so.
We probably should put out a RFP.
We can get it. Basically, all the stuff we can get through state contract. Uh, which Motorola has, and I'd like to stick with Motorola only because uh, we have a tech that services us. And he's really good. And, uh, and I'm sure we can get everything on, but we probably should as a, as a public entity put out a RFP.
I think you have to.
Yeah.
I think over ten thousand dollars.
But we don't have to go with the cheapest bidder, but as long as we spec it out to what we want.
And, and since, I mean, I hate to say this word already, but in front of all in the budget, because I feel like we've just did it. Uh, that's something that we can get around.
Was in place to put a little penny in the pot to replace it twenty years later, so now all of a sudden we're in a crisis mode where we'd like to, once we replace the system, set up something that we, so down the line, we're not hit slap in the face with a huge bill.
Our building was a privilege.
Uh, um, if you want, you and I can work together on getting some people together for that.
Perfect.
You're, you're exactly right, you can't just fix those things and I'm putting money, setting money aside for twenty years. Here we are.
Here we are again, yeah.
Four hundred thousand dollar bill and no money to pay for it.
Can I ask, are you guys using repeater off your radio system?
Well.
Fire, how's that in the ambulance?
Nine one one doesn't own a radio system.
Right.
Okay, so the sheriff's office or the county owns.
The sheriff.
Repeaters, uh, uh, North End, Grizzly, uh,
Black.
Out at, uh, Adele, and one on Hartmount. So, we cover eight thousand square miles, and then the fire departments have their own. Thomas Creek West Side has two repeaters.
Right.
And a base.
Which you guys, we share.
Right.
Of that. And also, I'd like to see maybe, because I know that they had to replace the West Side repeater.
Right.
And they have, looking for a home for the one on Black Cap repeater. And I know the expenses on those that we kind of are still trying to help fund that installation of this other repeater.
Yeah.
So that's something I'd like to see that we could at least look at down the road.
Yeah, I, yeah, there's a long story behind it. I had a free place for them and they said no.
Uh huh.
So it's like, it's hard to help people when you say, hey, I want to give you something inside of a cell or one building with, with electricity and heat and all that, and then they come back and say no.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we just, they, we need, we need to all need to work together.
Well, I think there's a whole new regime there, so.
Right.
So let's, let's get together, Scott, maybe in a week or so.
Yeah.
About to be in the afternoon, when you get to meet all of you. Uh, um, let's look at that.
We can go, we can go to dinner, don't you have an expense?
I don't think we're gonna have to come around.
Yeah, okay.
All right, let's move on. Fire?
I, probably the only thing I have extras kind of going on with what Scott has is trying to get these prices and stuff, and I'm looking for prices on stuff. The AFG grant is open now. We did have somebody to write it that he backed out of it, so I'm trying to find somebody to write the grant now. That's ha, has a little bit more experience. We're hoping, we're probably looking at somewhere around eight hundred thousand. And hopefully that'll cover Scott's side of the system. You know, repay the loan or whatever, and then do SCBA's and turnouts for the fire department on our side. Kind of bring us up to date with everything we've done, about thirty years old. I mean, it's still functional, still works good, it's just getting aged and getting parts. So, I'm gonna make a few phone calls tomorrow, hopefully I get somebody to write it that has some experience in winning it. I don't feel comfortable writing it myself, not for that much money, because we really need it, so.
But that's eight hundred thousand dollars, that?
We're, we're thinking it's gonna be around eight hundred thousand. I mean, for my end, it's probably gonna be around three hundred thousand, and then to redo Scott and nine one one, the furniture, computers, everything altogether.
Four to five thousand.
We're just kind of guessing that's what it is. We haven't got all those figures yet, but.
And also, let me remind, uh, bring up that to, uh, when he talks about turnout, about twenty-five hundred dollars per firefighter. So they're not cheap. Okay, engineering.
So I have a couple updates. Um, I'll start with what's actively being worked on right now. Uh, we have the Halls called Waste Project. Uh, we just got the final change order through, so we'll have all the electrical wiring in, uh, explosion proof casing and everything that was required when we sent it into an office and it got turned around to us. So that is slowly being worked and should be up shortly, I'd say, end of the month, maybe February, we'll be able to start using that. Uh, the Red Rock Cooling Water Project is going along very well. They have all the pipe in the ground right now. They are waiting on the pumps to be delivered. Uh, and this is a COVID delayed supplier issue that I've seen on other projects, pain in the butt. But other than those, we're good to go. Right now, they're doing final pressure tests on the lines to make sure there are no leaks, uh, and they are doing their cleaning and flushing. To make sure as soon as we get those pumps, we'll be ready to beta test it, move everything along, and then call it good until Red Rock needs to actually use that water. Uh, the Norton Waterline Extension. Um, right now, the engineering and design is done. We can put it out to bid as soon as the funding agencies give us a thumbs up and I might be talking a little out of turn, but I believe that something is due Thursday, that's, that's the, the town, not my office, to get the funding in place to apply for grant for this. Uh, as soon as we have grant money or loan money or however we're funding it in place, then we're ready to move forward and bid that out, get it built as soon as we can. Um, so the town got a fine for some non-compliance on, uh, on wastewater reporting from about two, three years ago or so. Uh, this was nothing more than somebody doing a man job at their job. That person is no longer here, I think he retired. Um, we sort of missed the opportunity to do a more formal, uh, to do a more formal protest on that, to try to get the fine down a little bit. Regardless, it was, what was it? It was a little over fifty-two hundred dollars of a fine. We saved about twenty-five hundred dollars over that window of the test that the guy never ran. So if you think of it like that, then it's really only costing the town about another twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, they took off a whole hundred and fifty dollars from that, so the final bill will be a little over a thousand, uh, five thousand dollars, it'll be about fifty-one hundred dollars as our final penalty. I'm gonna take this off for a sec. So I can speak a little better. Um, so our office would recommend just paying that. It's not worth, because if we look at the, say, twenty-five hundred dollars or so that we could be out, that we wouldn't have already spent if we remained in compliance, the manpower, the hours of going back and forth, it's just not worth it, throw money at it. Uh, I'm working really closely with Jeff at this point to ensure that that never happens again. We've got really good data tracking, we've got sheets to double check things. Uh, we are starting a new wastewater system permit as of February. Uh, and this is to account specifically for the cooling water in Lakeview, uh, to Red Rock, even though they won't be using it for a while. But, so that, that's starting up really soon, um, and I've been working pretty closely with Jeff to make sure we have the most up-to-date tracking forms and cheat sheets and all those things, so I don't expect to be out of compliance on that again. Um, because there's a good team in place now who's doing it. Uh, and the last thing, um, oh, two more things. Uh, we are tentatively gonna start moving forward with some, uh, with some improvements for the pool. We need some electrical redesign work, because as of right now, most of your electrical systems are in a dampened hole underneath the ground. That is not a great place in general, let alone for electricity. So in the next couple of weeks, our office will start on those actual redesigns and then get it out to bid when we see what money is in place for it. Uh, the other thing that we're gonna redesign slightly and get out to bid is replacing that roof. Uh, that in itself should be a pretty quick and simple thing. It's not a big roof, it's a single side. Um, so that's in the works, and I would hope that by the time the pool season's opened up, both those things will be taken care of. Uh, check back in next month on it. Um, and then the last thing, I just looked at an email chain from us and, uh, and, um, and the USDA about money for the water treatment center that we want to put in, um, to actually treat the iron and manganese in the water. Uh, that right now is just sort of in the ethers of the bureaucracy, going back and forth for other agencies. They said that by hopefully the end of this month, they should have information that we can move forward with that and the funding will be secured. This is one of the people involved in this, uh, this is her top priority. There are a couple other people from state that have bumped it down a little bit, uh, because their top priorities are things, uh, involved in fire management. And that is frankly a much larger emergency in the larger scheme of the state than our water treatment facility, but other than taking care of fire stuff, we are the next top priority for the state, so I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks that'll move forward. Uh, at that point, we'll start the, uh, the design work and, you know, slowly work towards getting that in. That's gonna be a large expensive project. Uh, are there any questions in general or specifically about the stuff anybody has for engineers?
I don't know if it's something we, maybe it's on the agenda, the pool roof. Um, the design kills me. Uh, it doesn't seem like that would be the most efficient here with snow loads, but.
Uh, we'll, we'll talk about that when we get.
Okay, that's what my big question was.
Okay, public works?
Um, I would just like to talk, I gave you guys a little report of what we did last month for the most part. Um, but we, about the Hall Waste Project, I don't know if Shannon and Jay are familiar with what that is, but uh, part of that fine that she's talking about was for the process that we were using to dump stuff that had been taken from septic tanks and from portable toilets. We was backing up dumping it right into the pond, which Kevin will tell you worked fine for twenty years.
I love this.
Didn't ever work.
Our, our inspection in October of nineteen. It was a new inspector and, and it was no longer acceptable practice, and the person before him pulled drawn, it was fine, just keep doing it, just keep doing it. Uh, he didn't feel that way, so the money we've spent on the Hall Waste Project is to build a facility that subject tank pumpers can dump into and it can be screened out if there's any garbage that comes into it, can go into a dumpster rather than into the sewer. Uh, we started off with a different location to begin with and ended up having to move it because some citizens that lived nearby where we planned to put it, uh, objected because of the possibility of an odor, so project got moved down on the stock drive. It's ninety-five percent complete now. Uh, today it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna work fine. We've had some issues with the site location was kind of small for the size of the facility, uh, we've worked, Anderson's have worked most, I think, all that out. Uh, we have a little bit of training for the users and, uh, we have to start using that by February first, and I think we'll be right on time for that. I mean, we can start using it at the time we're supposed to, to stay in compliance, so.
Is that true that you guys aren't providing the hose to hook onto the stream?
I don't think that's been said yet, but.
No, those are two, there's a hose, there's a wash down station.
What about the, the makeshift porta-pott for a hose, the lower one?
I don't know.
We, we can get you a hose.
As, as, as far as, as far as what my office aware of me, they will have a series of hoses or differing, uh, nozzles that they can attach on to the water. So any truck, depending on the hose size, because you've got three inches of, four inches, different diameters, uh, they'll have an option there that they can just click on, attach, and then use the hose. Um, I would like.
Oh, cool, I'll see that.
Uh, so, sorry, I'm gonna jump on your stuff a little bit. Um, so I was just down at the Hall Waste Building earlier today, uh, uh, Adam Albertson's building it, he has to, we have to do the electrical work, but that's the change order that just went through, so that is eminently being processed. The other thing they needed to do was put in, uh, a drain, and they are starting that today. Uh, past that, that building is done, so we should be ready to go by February.
They still just have electrical lights, like no ceiling, nothing on the walls?
As far as I'm aware, I haven't actually been inside the building yet.
Okay.
I was just looking at stuff outside.
Because I was told, uh, they were designed to be right above the door, so when the door opens, there's no lighting.
I unfortunately cannot speak to that as I was not on that project to design, so I can give you generalities and what they're actually doing out there, because I was out there today.
What do you know about that yet? We, Daryl and I talked about it, and the door will have to be open while you're using it, but there's also gonna be daylight from the door being open.
There's sometimes we stop at night though, too. Are you going, we have set certain hours, or is it open twenty-four hours?
It should be twenty-four hours for you guys. So I don't know what the answer was for that, but Daryl is aware of it.
Can we find out what the answer is to that? That's gonna be not a good thing for these guys.
And, and did we ever come across, uh, awning or something over the north door, on the north side of the building?
I don't believe an, an awning has been added to the north door.
Okay.
We, we need to look into the light, because, you know, there is, it's.
Because the fire cam.
Everything seems to have a door that blocks.
Should probably have a light outside, too, I saw it.
A whole light?
Mm-hmm, or just on the end, end of the building.
Just we go back into the building?
Right.
Pretty good idea.
I'll, I'll look at that, I'll see about that.
And on the inside.
Any concrete barriers, those are bad things.
And are we gonna have like a, you gonna get with this as far as, uh, a login sheet or something that we're gonna be?
Yeah.
That would probably be part of your training, I'm sure.
Yeah.
On print.
And so the lower one has been corrected or something has been created to allow for those smaller trucks to be able to dump?
The porta-pott truck's gonna be a challenge, because it's only talking an inch or two different height from, and that's gonna be the challenge one. But.
It's supposed to work, I mean, that's what the thing was designed for, so.
I think it's more designed for the larger trucks, not the smaller trucks, that's, well, we have to work out and try to make it work.
Yeah, we definitely will do that.
Yeah.
Okay. And is that, let's move on to old business. What then, water, are there easements, treatments?
We're all good.
We are still waiting with everybody except for Emress, because we're trying to find somebody that has authority to actually sign it. With the site managers, on somebody that's type of, he's been recognized as a man, and Oregon must have something from the board of directors. So they are kicking it up the chain, it's the appropriate person. Uh, we emailed that to them last week, kind of leaving a blank through the corporate office to be, and we're gonna, whoever, they're going to do it, it's just who has the legal authority to actually grant it, this property thing. Oregon law doesn't particularly care of that. This is a large corporation, they're gonna treat just like they would a local corporation. So that's, and everybody else is granted.
Everybody else except for Emress.
Yep, and, and Emress has not said no, they just have to find the right person that has the authority to do it.
Yep.
Good.
Okay. Let's move on to, uh, resolution nine nine eight for franchise business, lake disantation. Well, this is basically a name change from the old corporation to the new one. So we need to, uh.
We already voted on this one.
We did, but it's, I thought you voted on.
There is a, services was left out. They are not, they can't, they have to, they must be lake disantation services, because the corporation division will not let them use lake disantation, because they are still winding up the terms of the, um, incorporated one.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
So.
But there's no changes in the franchise, right?
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion if this.
And obviously, it is under new ownership, and that's why folks are here today. If you guys have any questions as far as.
My group. See, I, Shannon and Jay maybe think of questions.
Do you guys have any questions?
No, I already talked to.
Okay, so I have a motion and a. In favor of resolution nine nine eight?
Uh.
Okay. All right, let's move on to resolution nine nine nine, authorizing a loan from the Special Public Works Fund entering into a financing contract with the Oregon Infrastructure Finance Authority.
This is what they call, this is, uh, they, the abbreviation is IFA. This is the funding agency for the North End Water Extension Two. So this is our source of funding for that, so this is the offer of resolution. We've already applied for the finding, it's been granted, but this is entering, this is the council entering loan contract for that. So, that's what this is today as far as what we're asking the council to do. So, does anybody have any questions?
As a grant, so everything's been approved and everything turns in on that?
There is actually one additional grant that's gonna be coming up later, and we can always, we don't have to take full amount of money. So if, what, what we're gonna be dealing with is actually the next item, grant situation number one thousand. If there's more money, uh, there's been one forty-five thousand dollar grant that's already been granted. Uh, several of the users, including Anderson Engineering, um, Harvey Construct, excuse me, S Stov, and, um, Greg Larson and his company have all kicked some funding in to reduce that cost. And then Michelle over the weekend is gonna find an additional financing opportunity that may lower that some more, so, again, this is the maximum amount we're approved for. Anything we get other grants in the interim, we don't use it, we don't have to take it, so.
So we don't get penalized if we don't use a whole amount?
No. No, they're, they're plenty happy not to lend any more than they have to, so that's kind of what they want, so more resources.
We were looking at a lot less than this, right? But I'm the first, I was, excuse me. Like, I don't remember it being that high.
It went up because there were some people that were assumed that they were then signing and they ended up.
And they withdrew, yeah. I just remember the last number was lower, but, oh, we're going for worst case scenario, I assume.
Yes. That's what I've asked, that's what I've asked them.
Looks like they're, they're.
Yeah.
It is a thirty-year repayment, I believe.
And then, uh, silver department's putting up the suicide report.
Yes.
And it's being paid for by, it will be serviced by, I mean, the franchise costs and stuff, it's, that's been reduced, and it's going to be serviced by the, um, property taxes generated by these new users that are annexing into the.
After the annex and then also the service.
Yep. Plus some upfront costs that they're already kicking in with.
So we haven't voted on nine 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 yet.
That's correct.
Okay, so I need to do that. About your motion on nine nine nine?
I'll make the motion to to follow the resolution nine 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 again.
Sorry.
You want to make in second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Just gotta get your mark out, yeah.
All right, now we're moving into new business. We're all kind of huddled in here. Uh, the resolution one thousand, federal grant application for North Water, North End Water Project.
So I'm gonna, I'll let Michelle, um, kind of get the initial part, and then I'll explain why they're requiring, because why they're requiring resolution and some of the funding commitments that are in the resolution. So Michelle, do you want to talk about generally what this project, what just funding sources and all? I mean, what the commitment is behind it?
So, um, I'm trying to run in parallel the fi, uh, two different fun, funding sources. One is the IFA, which all of that documentation other than the resolution has been submitted. The other one is the grants, and this is the resolution authorizing us to move forward with all of the paperwork for the grants, so I'm hoping that, uh, we do, are awarded the grant money, that we can then just define the IFA loan. So, uh, but grants are roll of the dice, and so I didn't want to be leaving the North End project undone or without, um, resources to get it done. So we're running those in parallel. Um, I'm I'm wanting to make the committee for the federal funds by the twenty-second of this month, so that we can get the money by February.
The, um, this is a type of grant, and it is a grant, but it requires matching funds, and it requires committed funds that cannot be, have any other commitments. So they are asking for a match from the town of a hundred fifty thousand, so if this is approved, it's obviously gonna be way less, if they approve the whole amount or something like this, but there is a local match of a hundred fifty thousand that has to come out of the fund, and that's what this resolution sets up. It's also a certification by the council, that you guys designate this, that those funds are committed for the duration of the project. They have no other preconditions on them except for federal project requirements and things of that nature. So that's why the resolution has some additional teeth to it, because those are, um, program requirements under this particular funding, federal funding source. And some of this is CARES Act, you know, coronavirus relief and things of that nature, and some other projects, this is a grant application for multiple different projects, so.
Actually, that's not really correct. Um, we had, we can either do one of two things with the grant. We could apply for a hundred percent, or we could apply for eighty. I felt like we could have a better chance of applying for eighty, and there has already been, uh, uh, an agreement that Public Works could kick in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of sewer money. So I felt like it was a better opportunity for us to be, um, approved, because we're putting our own skin in the game too.
Right, because that hundred fifty thousand is gonna be spent on whatever.
Agreed.
Correct.
So, you know, I agree with that.
So, and I needed to state that in the resolution, saying that we do have that earmarked for this project. Either way, we, either we get the loan or we get the grant, we're gonna need to put in a hundred fifty thousand anyways, so.
Right, right. As I begin, those are the part of, that's, that's the match requirement for this one.
Is there any expected expenses for the loan that, let's say we get the grant, that will be out on the loan side already? If we decide to turn down the loan?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of, and my hope is that we get the grant money. It, either, my goal was to start the project as fast as we could. So if the loan comes through, then we start, if the grant comes through, we start. Um, that was my goal.
Because also no, if you guys start using loan funds and you don't finish, there, this isn't the type of loan that has any kind of prepayment penalty or anything like that, so you get one source, you get started with it, and you can just pay it all back. They're not gonna take the care of it, because that money is gonna get rolled over to somebody else in the state through IFA, so.
We plan on the express this morning, so, yeah, we're, we're in it.
I'll make a motion if we pass resolution one thousand as written.
So, second?
I second.
Motion made in second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for working towards both of those.
You're welcome.
I know those grants are not, and loan applications are not easy.
Okay.
They are not. They are not, but I appreciate it, thank you.
You know, we need to back up. I missed Michelle's, uh, report. I'm sorry.
Would you like to hear from me here?
Yeah.
So I just explained now north water loan and sort of the parallel, uh, approach that I've taken. Um, two things are coming up. Our McDonald Park grant through Oregon Parks and Rec will be at the committee for approval tomorrow. So we should learn if we've been awarded that, which is seventy-five thousand dollars as soon as I hear a lake disantation. The larger pool grant, we are in the finalists. We were one of twenty-eight, they will be awarding seven to eight larger grants of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I am going to go defend that to the committee the first, first week of February. So, um, super excited and a little nervous, but I think I'm gonna do good. Um, until we know for sure that we have the pool grant, because it allows us to do a whole bunch of stuff. I felt like we needed to take some of the money that we had earmarked in our budget to start the electrical work. Because I just, I don't know, we may receive it, we may not. Um, and then, um, we received a grant, a donation of twenty-three thousand dollars to the pool, which will also be working to put the roof on. So we have about fifty, fifty thousand, a little bit less to get those projects started.
Are we looking at pitching the roof on that building or just going back to the flat roof?
Well, um, I, I got Rob Thornton up there looking at it and I asked him about that rubberized roofing, to put that on there. And he said that would work perfect, but you'd have to get somebody that does that work and anyone who knew without clamber falls hammer's roofing.
Yeah, but what's the cost? I mean, that building looks terrible.
It, it's, it's why I'm trying to pitch it. And I asked, um, Anderson Engineering as a ballpark range and it was seventy-five thousand. I wasn't excited about that, um, but I also had in my head that it was gonna be around three hundred and fifty thousand for the pitch roof. So that's why I was excited. Other people find it very expensive. Um, but I think it would be in our benefit to pitch it.
Well, I mean, you gotta look at it the long term because anybody's gonna use that. The rubber is, it's maintenance every year and, and then, you know, leaks, but you pitch it.
I think they put it on the school, didn't they? Uh, over there and it lasted pretty good.
What I have on my according is plus fifty.
I don't know why you didn't tell Flack.
That's what, I mean, if you put a nice metal roof with a pitch on it, though, you're looking at almost no maintenance for a lot longer time. And that's not just maintenance, but time and availability of people.
We put it on here as well.
It worked, I mean, it'll get rough and it just, you know.
It would look a lot better.
And it was a lot better.
It would have stayed.
I can, um, I can dig around to see what we could earmark for a pitch roof, um.
Well, forget that, grant.
I didn't, I only did it for the lack of the.
Well, they were, we also, we.
We may be able to, or the something that we wanted to add to the pool in lieu of going for a pitch roof.
Well, I mean, we think it might even alleviate some of the issues of people getting in because that's still an issue with the way, the way the roof sits and that.
It's probably the problem pitch roof.
I talked to Michelle about those two projects for one reason and that was, it may take a long time to get contractors.
Yeah.
And so we get it out now, then by the time we're ready, you know, time to go around and work on it, we'll have a contractor to do it hopefully.
Well, I think we should get a price on the rubberized roof and see the price difference between rubberized roof and pitch roof.
And analyze the maintenance over the years too, the time and cost.
Well, I think they come with a guarantee of like ten years on the rubber roof.
Yeah.
So if it does need maintenance, we'll be, whoever put it on doing it.
Yeah, but if you, if it's only got a lifespan of ten years, if you pitch that roof, you're looking at it for to get a roof.
And are is that roof gonna qualify for the warranty because you also have to have a substructure that's worthy of it?
It's pretty solid, or it is a lot. You would, it would take a lot of pitch, I mean, you have to be twenty feet high on the front of it to slope it to the hill. That'd be a lot.
Or you can slope it down this way so that when snow melts and comes down the.
That building's too short.
All right, well, anyways, it'd be worth that, that analysis, I would give.
I, I think so too.
Plus it would look a lot, it would look amazing.
And storage possibly of stuff, which you just went to with that.
The last thing I have, I hired Shelley Daddie on a temporary basis to help me with payroll and finance and I can't even tell you how grateful I am. She's picked up and just started running simply because she can remember what she was doing before. She's been such a great asset already and it's been one week and I just totally love her. Um, as a matter of fact, on your very, uh, I think it's your last page. I asked her to run the financials of the pool income for the twenty-twenty year. Um, to give you an idea of what was spent and what was, uh, what it cost the town. Um, there are a few things missing, we're still working on getting those re- uh, allocated to the correct accounts from, uh, the previous finance director. Um, so, there you go.
Do we have revenue? Why not see?
The re- the revenue is the top line. Inhold, pull in them.
Even higher.
Very personally.
Well, we know, and then we don't have the donation in here, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's going towards the, uh.
Yeah, but it's under the pool account, right? That's correct.
What would you mean in the rating of the pool?
Uh, before, before the COVID hit, um, it was more than I think what it was this, this year for loss.
Do we know, now, do we know what the income was for two thousand and nineteen?
Cause I thought we lost, we've lost money over several years.
It's never, it's never even broke even, ever. It normally loses about twenty thousand dollars a year. Now, only last twenty-five.
And we definitely had to have more staff. I mean, one person in general, and it's a full-time employee, we had to hire just because of COVID. That wasn't a lifeline, so that, you know, was probably what, five thousand dollars for the entire summer.
Like, we anticipated going in the hole. I think it's just one of those things where it's a community service that is offered by the town.
Although, moving forward, I would love to have discussions about raising rates and I know that's not something anybody wants to hear. But we need to look at cost of living, we need to look at what we're paying our employees because in the last five years, they've gone up several dollars in pay versus, or rates haven't changed.
Well, my question is that we do get our grant and then it would make sense, um, that they're paying for a, a really nice facility.
You have to give a facility to fill the green.
Yeah, yes, so, you know, we wanna upgrade so that it makes sense for us to say we may raise the rates.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyways.
Uh, can I make one comment before we move on?
Yeah.
Um, so, so we're gonna start the electrical and roof design work, right? We need to give something to the contractor soon. Uh, please let us know what you want us to design. You are the client, we will give you what you want, but this goes into sort of cost benefit of, for example, with the hall waste plant, we designed it a site location and then after the fact, when everything was in place, the design was finalized, approved, then you move it to another site, so then there are more alterations and more engineering work that we have to do because we're doing the job twice. So for you guys, just let us know what you want and that's what we give you.
Oh, we won't move the pool though, I promise.
I know. But pitch roof, what do you want us to do?
Well, we, we gotta.
We have to figure it out.
Like I said, talk about it.
Yes.
Send us, send us an email, let us know. Not, not our decision to make, just our decision to follow whatever you guys want us to do.
Do you have anything else?
That's all.
No, then.
Okay, let's move on. Um, maybe CTF closing, July twenty-second, informational. Do you have that?
July twenty.
That's just informational, that's, uh, what we're hearing, um, I'm on the coalition. The governor's, it was rumored that she sent out an executive order to close it, but she still hasn't, so it's just on the back end.
Can't, it, it's out there, it's not signed by the.
That's correct. So I don't know if we wanna do letters or whatever, but it's out there, keep ready to close.
Okay, let's move on, Michael Carter.
Appreciate it, I just brought some information, I'm gonna thank you to everybody. It's your day. Um, it's a big need in this community for, uh, daycare. Right now, our program is, um, serving between thirty-five and forty kids a day, you know, depending on the amount. And what this is, just give a little bit idea here of what we're looking at, so. So we're, we're looking at trying to purchase the property down the road, um, on six, meeting, I don't know, South Course, sorry.
We gotta get Jay to share.
He's kinda sneaky.
Right over here? Anyway, this is, these are made, uh, this is demographics here, make sense, I have a new, I'm just gonna break this out and try to figure something out. But he's looking at the population here, we're talking about a pretty good population. So the needs here for, um, for some kind of daycare. So what I have is a proposal that I've been looking at and then I will bring it to my school board after you look at. This is gonna be a little long, share a proposal, so it's not a, a short thing, so I apologize that this day is the one to give this to you. But I'm new to the community and you guys have been great helping me, but I don't know all the nuances.
Okay.
So I apologize for that. I'm not here to offend anyone or all that stuff. Thank you, just go ahead. So, um, so what we're looking at is you can see the need, so that's number one. And we're looking at operating the program, it will be gold certified. Now, there are two grants, I have one grant going in on Wednesday, and if I get that, that'll be, that would be great for us. And if we don't, we move for the preschool grant, and that's half million dollars. And I've had success getting two of those already and I've helped five other districts get them in the state. So I think we have a very good shot. There are also geographic points and we haven't got one, so that gives us ten points automatic. So if we write a good grant, we'll be there. So I don't wanna waste your time, you know, tonight, I want you to look at this, this is something I hadn't brought to my board, but I forgot it first and then they, they get an email just about ten minutes ago, so I emailed it as well. So, um, you can say, hey, he's crazy, yeah, I am, but I'm all crazy about our kids. So that's what I wanna talk about and, and what we're looking at here is, this would be an opportunity for our kids to work. So what we're looking at offering to buy, is to buy this building from the, that city. Um, now, in the beginning, I was trying to make a little higher money and it depends what we have, the problem with this ADA compliance, there's a lot of stuff out there. So what we looked at was there's a, we will have to extend the awning out there and get engineering work on there and then put the, one of those ramps up. You know, the real fancy electronic lamps and that, that, that will cost us a little bit of money and we don't know exactly what they're gonna require for the weight limit. And that's the big piece. So that could be anywhere from between twelve thousand, five hundred, we could work ourselves all the way up to, you know, thirty something thousand. So what we're offering is, and it's, it is low, I wanna make sure you know that, we understand that, but it's a partnership. And we're offering a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars right now and we're willing to go at a hundred and twenty if we have to. Um, but this depends on how much ADA compliance is gonna be for us. So we will have to do some ADA compliance for the backside. The backside has, by the way, interrupt me anytime you have questions, because I'm gonna do this rapidly, there's a lot of work here. I'm not a lawyer, so I just put the, a, a draft proposal together to say, hey, I believe this is something that we can use and that city park is right next door, that's a great community, um, relationship park here. The other part is that right now we would be able to serve, it's a recruiting tool for all of us who hire employees, you know, from the hospital all the way through. So we're looking at running this in the beginning at seven o'clock in the morning, going to five and then at the end, we will hopefully get from six thirty in the morning to six at night. So we're looking at a very good proposal for this, to get, you know, to serve all of our community. The other part is, you're gonna see this, we're gonna have to offer work sake for our kids. So if you want to go, we have a medical field, we have a CNA, so we will actually combine that. And you'll see in the board meeting tomorrow night, we have a preliminary agreement with KCC, the K, uh, CC right now. And that will be one of our first programs that we'll bring back in, with the CNA program. So we're looking at purchasing the building and, and then, uh, working with the city. Now, this is a draft, we're gonna say, hey, no, we, we wanna, this is our first preliminary shot for us, so we're looking at. So you look at it and say, hey, we got some issues with that, we should do this and we'll make it work. But I, I really think this is a great opportunity for us to serve our entire community. And as you can see, we're gonna be serving three hundred and forty plus kids, you're gonna be serving three hundred, so we could do a great deal here. And that also in the summertime, so this is the best part, this will not be just school done, this will be twelve months.
Would you be able to house more children in the summer there? We don't have the info.
And then our plan is to also keep our daycare there, if we have overflow, we can move our younger kids there. So we're up for a preschool grant, so we've already led, run phase, uh, level one, so we go to phase two. If we get phase two, then we'll out, offer a preschool and if my board approves it, that will allow us to have preschool. So we have, we're gonna have one in ABK and also have one in, um, Hume. So we have two for, to serve our community. Um, all those kids who go to preschool, we'll be able to go to daycare after school. So it would be, it would be a really a win-win for everyone. Um, and it's COVID-proof. Is, if we wind up doing COVID, we'll just, we need it, and then we'll have online.
Is the preschool income based?
Uh, yes, great question, absolutely wonderful question, because that's where we'll get our, re- recruit our money. So our goal is, we will not make money on this project, um, we, our goal is to break you.
Right, so one of the biggest things I would say as a short call in our community is there's the Head Start and then there's the PPI and there's kind of a, I mean, we often do, you know, preschool, so we're kind of got this middle area that a lot of people aren't quite there and they're not quite there.
Our goal is to sliding, so in the past, what I've done before is, I mean, the highest we paid was four hundred dollars a month, that was for the highest income. And that will work with this model.
That's pretty good.
This would be really great for our, our community.
Yeah.
Um, like I said, our, we don't need to make money, we need to break you.
Right. I like it, I do too, I, I know it's a huge need. Um, so is there anything, I'm kinda reading through this and let me play, I appreciate the really large font.
I'm older, we get the bigger kids.
I was gonna read them.
I'm thinking up, say, how many feel more trees than we used to.
I'm stipulating that. So is there anything that I, I mean, I'm reading this, is there anything that you would expect the town of Lakeview to maintain? I see that you have something on maintaining.
Yeah, we, we plan to maintain it, buy it, well, the only thing we have right now, and then again, that might change if I get the grant, we'll find that out by March then we would, we won't have to need the nine months, you know, send it back to the city, we'll just keep it. I don't see it, I, right now, our program, our district has covered it, the board has been gracious to let us cover, we haven't charged anybody. And, you know, it's worked real well and we have a hard, high need for it. Unfortunately, it doesn't fit the hospital's need because we've not gone long enough, you know.
And we have first right of refusal.
Yes, ma'am, in fact, all this is not, the legal ease, I'm not a lawyer. We will, if you guys say, yeah, we like this idea, go forward, then I will work with our attorney, your attorney, with the same attorney.
Cool, it's cool, it's right.
And, and then we're not here to cheat anybody, please, what a working relationship, what we will do is, you know, I give you my word of honor for the program, makes it fair so we can go ahead and serve our kids and I think it's gonna be a great option. Um, I've already contacted some of the pastors and some of them agreed that they will take over the room for us, help clean it up. So, you know, we, we've got it all planned if it goes, so we're looking forward to make it work.
One thing I have to tell everybody is, like we did the last time, we will have to do a, we have to do a notification in the newspaper because this is a new proposal, so we have to, uh, get that out, if that's what you guys wanna do for kind of, just in general, in this draft proposal and, uh, we can do the notice like we did last time, you get to talk about value and everything else, we've got a real price of paying, kind of none of that. And then you guys can get bits of public hearing type situation, so if that's what you guys are wanting to do, we know that quickly so we can get, um, notification in the next newspaper for the last meeting of the month.
Well, I definitely would like to do it sooner or later because I know this all kind of came to discussion almost six months ago and we, you know, COVID has kind of just laid things. Uh, and this building, as it sits there, just keeps aging and, and, you know, it's something that could be used in the summer like that, I mean, it's needed. Uh, there's a lot of perks to having it used with the lunch program there as well.
If, if we got this rolling, we, my goal would be, we have this rapid recovery rate. So it'd be, it'd be some work, but we can get it done. The only, the only thing that we don't know is in there is the ADA variable, but we do have the one part there and, um, Scott Howell's on my board, he's worked for the building, he's recently done and if the ADA lets us have one entrance and exit, we'll be fine.
Yeah.
They do two, that's when the, that's why I had to put the money in there, change it, because I was gonna offer more for the building, but that, that variable really hits us with the school district.
No, I, yeah, I understand that. You know, um.
And now we have our CMA, which helps.
What, what council thinks, should we just go ahead and move forward with it?
Well, yeah, we have to have a hearing either way.
Correct, so you guys, so would you guys like this, would you like the hearing scheduled for the last meeting of the month?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I think so.
Then we'll get that, if, with council's direction, then I'll get that back in the newspaper with. Then we'll get that, if, without his direction, then I'll get that back in the newspaper with the same notice, just with kind of the proposal, and that way it can kind of.
And, and the price, you know, like you said, it's partnership, at a hundred and fifteen, I'm good with that, I don't know.
I'm good with that.
Right.
I, I just would like to see that building, something be done with it, another daycare, preschool, putting these down, it's definitely.
It seems to be the most logical use for that building.
Well, it, it, I, I do like, I put drill marks on it, I wanted to look at it.
I do too.
I'm very, I'm very excited, like, I, I, I just think about what, I just think about the location drop off, and I see the safety piece and the whole bit, I, I think it's a great way. And the parking right there is just a, that is musical.
Well, having that building revitalized, if we get a grant, we can partner with, you know, looking at, okay, how can we work together, what, what can we do to make that more useful for you guys?
Yeah, and that's something I'd like to look at in the future too, um, which, we do this, we have this work, is partnering on doing some work in that part of the school.
That, that would be, that's what we would love to see, because it's a win-win, anything we do like that's our kids.
We brought lunches, we brought lunches down there also, and put the kids right outside, it was pretty cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I can see three or four years down here, a little water park, kids going there and get splashed, I think it'd be great.
I mean, can you imagine a preschool saying, hey, we're going to the pool for the weekend, a very safe pool.
And that, I mean, I, I just see this, the partnership would be a really good starting place. The key thing, and that's why I write the demographics, the need is there. And the sliding scale is going to be great, so that way we don't price somebody out.
Yeah.
The whole purpose is, you know, you're, even if you're making really good money, seventy, seven hundred to nine hundred dollars a month, the daycare is, is really a big hit.
Oh, yeah, paid it.
All right, council, just so you know, I met with Michelle today on this very subject. She is already applying for a grant. Looking forward to this, to help out.
For the school or the daycare preschool?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're applying to help you for two hundred thousand dollars.
So do we need to have a vote to move forward with this, or?
No, I mean, you can't, you gotta go to the public hearing first. Anytime, anything less than talk about changes, I just don't want somebody coming in. Because another bit, if we don't do the public hearing.
Right.
It's one of those things, if people don't show up to it, then it's kind of forever hold for peace. I just don't want anybody messing it up, what you guys are looking at.
I think we have given enough consensus to go ahead and move forward with the meeting at the last.
So everybody agrees, move forward?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
That's it. Um, Jeff, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Can we still do those signs? Do they make their own signs out there?
You know, I've already ordered the signs for comments after the four-way, so. There's a couple nights ago, they should be here pretty soon.
Been misspelled for years.
Is it spelled right?
Yeah, the new one is, okay.
Okay.
I looked in the phone book. If it's wrong, it's a two-fold.
Next on the agenda is, well, somebody else asking for an extension. We gave her extension before, but still hasn't had, with the COVID, shut, shut them down again, and now they're backed up partially running. So I believe they need another extension, am I correct? Yeah.
We're using the funds, because they have.
Yeah, yeah, from that money.
Do we have a, do we just have to make a motion on that, or do we have to have a resolution?
I will have a resolution. If you guys are generally okay with that, I will have a resolution for you guys, because we've kind of been doing them as, because it is a contract, it needs to be properly amended. So if you guys are good with that, we'll put that on next conference meeting, and we have that ready for you in that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess.
It, it needs to be formal, because you guys have, or you guys have tried to keep that program very regimented, here's how we're doing it. Again, COVID's plenty of good reasons to do that, but it just needs to be formal.
Okay.
What is the duration of extension they're requesting, do you know?
Uh, I'll have to go through all my.
Can I get back to them?
Yeah.
Go get the other information.
I will.
Because it might have shifted again since we last talked, I think we were talking February, it might be, COVID has just, it literally has just messed everything up, so.
And why don't we just do a minimum of a six-month extension on it, so they're not.
I mean, you still are getting the same amount of money.
Correct, not a change, it's just, it's the period of expending it. So you guys would like it, you guys would like the six months.
Do a six month.
Longer rather than shorter.
Yeah.
Do a six-month on it, and we'll reevaluate.
Review with them.
Okay. That's what I'll, I'll report.
Okay, um, next is the, the four-way stop signs down on South Fourth and I, and South Fifth and H. And Dr. Jeff, he's already ordered the signs.
Where's the four-way at?
Right, yeah, he's playing that question for us on.
Four ways.
I thought it was.
South Fourth and I.
I'm in the school.
South Fourth and I, okay. We really need it.
It's got more age.
That's a three-way, isn't it?
When, when you're being.
Not before. Not South Fourth. It's a four-way intersection.
Coming out of high school?
At Fourth and I.
South Fourth, not Third, Fourth, I was off the street.
Okay, right there.
Fourth is one more street.
By elementary.
Yeah, by elementary, of course.
One block north of your old house.
Right.
There you go.
That's a rock.
That's why. That house.
Because you can't go home at somebody else's house.
You're afraid you're going to see someone get ran over there.
Okay, next is insulation of wood stoves and heating units.
We've got all this done, we had, I believe, thirty-six units installed, and it's all done, and everybody's happy.
Get thirty-six out of that one thing?
No. We didn't, we didn't put in thirty-six stoves.
Oh, oh, and splits.
We, we had fourteen wood sheds, and I thought there were seven stoves that got replaced.
No, I'll get you the numbers, it's more than that, but we spent the money, right? We spent the money, we filled out.
They should.
As long as we spent the money.
All the shit you're behind.
Yep.
All right, um, next is, uh, new OSHA COVID nineteen rules training has been completed.
So the state came out with new OSHA rules and regulations, and we get required a mandatory all-employees, um, training, which we held, and we're done.
Perfect.
Hey, we've already talked about the electrical work and rules repair. Now we got to vote for new town council president, so do we have any nominations?
I nominate Scott.
Second now.
Motion. Okay, nominated Scott. Second, those, any other nominations? Hearing none, vote in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so you're new council president.
So you don't need to push it up the chair.
Uh, town council liaison, we're, we're going to need a work session, unless everybody pretty much already knows. On the liaison, if you want to leave them, or.
I would like to rotate them through.
Well, that's what we should be doing.
That's what we discussed during two years ago, so.
And we never did.
And we never, which we, you know, COVID hit, wasn't playing much, but there was a lot of, a change that happened. And so, I mean, Scott could take over, um, council pres- uh, or, you know.
Can I suggest maybe you guys add a, at the next meeting, like fix, I think you could do it fifteen minutes.
I'm not scheduled to work session.
You could do it fifteen minutes before the meeting at the end of the month, and they took this council, like, we're.
Correct.
But that would give you guys, all you guys could look through them, kind of have an idea, but if any, any debate on it or anything has to be done in a public session.
Wouldn't we just meet an hour before that training or something, or an hour after?
Yeah, I don't know, who else, who else deserves that meeting technically? Not going to be here for the training.
When has it been?
Next week.
I won't be here.
What date?
Like two days next week.
What's that training, does it?
Uh, it has, it might, you know.
I actually got a bill.
Six, next Tuesday.
I know, it's very good, but my wife said I have.
It'll be next Tuesday, I'm west, and I won't be here.
I won't be here. So let's just do a thirty minutes work session prior to a next meeting.
Next Tuesday, okay. We can do that.
Hey, I got one more question.
Yeah.
Well, I was just, on the new dump site, you know, with the sewer stuff, have you guys come up with an agreement on what the rate increase is going to be?
We, we don't have all the, we don't have the final say on how much it's going to cost altogether.
Is you have an idea, what, no, I'm just saying for our stuff and our dump fee is going up.
I, I realize what you're saying, but we don't have that.
Don't have that agreement.
We don't how much, know how much it costs yet.
And we're the only ones paying for it, is this ours?
Yeah, we have to agree with ours. It doesn't have to be paid for in one year. You know, we, we have to discuss that.
Because you said you want to.
Definitely going to change.
You want to get it into effect by when? The new, the February, it's actually.
Starting dumping in February, yeah.
When do you think you'll have solidified the rate increases to be able to notify us, could that all?
Talking about having the training a week before.
But we'll have to pass on the, the cost to the customers, we'll have to notify them.
It doesn't have to become effective the day we start using it either. Well, you know, we'll let you know plenty of times, charge your customers or, or notify your customer.
So how long does the shit gonna last? So we have that many years to pay for it? About eight years, maybe?
Well, I don't know your side, see, because we haven't been spending anything.
Right.
For the past one year.
Well, I, I paid for the fence, adult gate.
Yeah.
You know.
So Jeff, uh, I believe when we had to submit the hall waste plans to DEQ, there was also a hall waste report that I wrote that has the new rate in it, that I do not remember off the top of my head, because between ten and fifteen cents.
I, I was not aware of that, because we don't even have the, the fence building yet.
No way.
The report.
I remember, we discussed it.
Because I.
Why don't you guys discuss that after?
I'll email you the report, Darrell.
We have to. All that probably discussed it.
It's true. I don't think they're voting right now, they're not, you know.
We still need more.
But I need to make it figured out, needs to be on the agenda for the end of the month.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, we need to give these guys at least sixty days, when the time when you come up with a rate, to notify their customers and know what's going on. It takes one day, it's maybe nine, to make sure that the customers are notified and.
Yeah, so we have to prepare for it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know we discussed it months ago, and I don't think we've had much of a meeting since then, so.
We discussed so many different rates, we were all in place on that discussion.
Yeah, well, and that's the thing, is we have a whole new council pretty much, so we definitely need to have a meeting with the, to reach them out. And I know that you guys all provided a lot of information, Daryl did some, um, organization and stuff like that, if we could get, um, Shannon and Jay that information as well, and that's to refresh our memories.
Can I suggest you guys maybe, as you're part of your, it's council pleasure, of course, as part of your work session, maybe do this two issues. One, the liaison assignments, which you guys, assuming the council will probably dispose pretty quickly. And then you can have a rediscussion, so that you bring the new council members up to speed on what was discussed and kind of. Because it, I think it took about ten or fifteen minutes to kind of discuss that in general, that way everybody's on the same, what's going to be, what they ask is going to be for the rate.
So should we do it three o'clock on the twenty sixth?
Twenty sixth.
We have a good forty-five minutes.
Throw on the landing application somewhere else. Uh, usable.
So what, what, uh, kind of time do you think you guys are going to need to notify the, like, uh?
Sooner the better.
I would say at least a sixty-day window at minimum, yeah. Because that's, if it is anywhere close to what we just estimated, that is a three to four full change, and people are not going to be happy with that. They want to give up, and that's what we discussed, yeah.
You know, looking at costly staggering increases, we know we're behind, but we don't want to pass it on, my personal.
And I'm going to blame them on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know, right?
But we don't want to make it so it's an equal increase.
Yeah.
I didn't believe that we should make it, I don't want to speak for my co-counselors, but, uh, so if you guys could be here for that meeting, twenty-sixth, the work session. That would be great, because you guys have a big buy into it, for our customers. About three, on the twenty-sixth.
What are you thinking, you have like twenty-five dollars a gallon?
Everyone wants to pay for that.
Are you hoping to do another grant?
I'm hoping.
Does anybody have anything else? There are none? And we'll adjourn the meeting at five oh five.